Will the regular scheduled meeting for the Committee of the Whole/Finance for Wiser City Council please come to order? It is Tuesday, July 15, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Will clerk please call the roll.
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Renese?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Yurcheck?
Here.
And Williams?
Here. All entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole/Finance from July 1, 2025, may have a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the Whole/Finance Committee Meeting from July 1, 2025.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention, motion carries. Next item's draft legislation for this evening. First item, let's go right down through it. Item number one, who would like to address that?
Thank you, Mr. President. This item is for the bulk water fill station. We originally had legislation for $375,000 that we increased to a not-to-exceed amount of $435,000. $200,000 is related to the water line that runs adjacent to the bulk water fill station. $235,000 is for the design consultant's opinion of construction costs, so that's including the installation of the actual station, pouring a concrete pad approximately the size of a semi truck, and then gravelling the entrance and egress drives, as well as some related drainage work. And this was an item that I believe in the committee, we thought we were going to suspend and call that on one reading today.
That's correct, because I believe some of this work is also, that's going to be done here, will be part, not part of, but will be done in conjunction with the looping project, correct? So some of this will, it's being done now, so the looping project can go smoother when it goes through this area.
Yeah, and the importance of, or the request for suspension of the rules is to just try to get the construction in this year while weather permits.
Any questions from council?
Yep, we'll suspend and call that.
Okay.
That'll be ordinance number 25-101.
And item number two, is that you also?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This item relates to the lead service verification program, amounts not to exceed $350,000. It's basically for a more expansive program, in essence, drilling with a high-pressure jet approximately 3,000 holes in various areas of grass to test the materials below that, and request, if possible, consideration in two readings.
And then, didn't, on this one here, we also just afterwards with the lead time and everything on this, we had thought that we might go three on this too, because this goes out through, what was it, 2035?
37.
37, yeah.
Let's, well, I'll move that to second anyway, but... Any comments, questions from council? Okay, what would you like to do, Mr.?
I'll move that to second.
That'll be 25-102.
And then item number three?
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. Trees Road Storm Replacement. This item is not to exceed $195,000. The design is basically complete, and we would request consideration in two readings.
Again, any questions from council? Councilmember Stugmeyer?
Move that to second.
That'll be 25-103.
Mr. Tusk, your honor, roll.
Yes, thank you. Item number four relates to a cable television rate increase proposal. Basically, on our cable television services, the cost of content rises every year, and we've not increased cable rates since 2018, so on our packages, we're actually losing money each month per subscriber. We've proposed a rate increase that would generate approximately about $30,000 of additional income on a monthly basis for our current subscriber base. Of course, as we move to the fiber project and streaming products for television services, that the quantity of folks on cable will decrease. We selected these rates really after taking a look at competitor rates, and these rates do not cover our full cost, but they do is they reduce the monthly losses. And the reasoning for the prices that were selected is we were trying to balance the need for additional revenue against the concern that we don't want to raise prices to the point that customers could choose to drop our service altogether, and would make it just that much harder to then attract them back as a streaming customer. This is an item that could go three readings.
Okay.
How much are they going up?
It varies. $9, $10, just depending on the package. Packages, we have four different tiers of service, but we also have combinations of add-ons like premium channels. Those are typically only going up about a dollar or so, and the rates, there's a single tier of rates that is being proposed for all customers.
And the basic rate will actually drop a dollar once the streaming comes in and the cable end is totally gone, so they'll actually come back down after all the fibers run and the streaming's all in.
You mentioned something about competitors. Where are we at with competitors?
I don't have that data in front of me on competitor rates, but the rates that we looked at were designed to be on par with competitor rates. I'm sorry, I don't have those, but I could certainly provide those to council, the competitor rates for those around us.
That'd be great, if you could provide that.
I'll move that to second.
Okay.
That'll be 25-104.
Okay, item number five, who would like to address that?
I will address those. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take the next few items as well. Good evening, everyone. This ordinance is related to the free park improvement plan. It is for us to enter into a purchase agreement for the materials installation and construction through a cooperative purchase agreement for the field work going out there. We have the $1.97 million budget that we have for that project. We're not exactly sure if we're going to be able to get it for that amount, so we're looking at a couple items in there that will reduce, whether it be the playset, maybe the top surface of the parking lot so we can get in and budget, and then perhaps go next year to budget those items in. We wanted to make sure with this project that we wanted to get the purpose of this park done was to construct a new field for softball, baseball, lacrosse, and soccer. So, everything included in this, we want to make sure that that field is done, that the core surface course, or not the surface course, but the base course of the parking lot is in, the restroom facility is in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you have any questions, please.
Councilmember Rosberg?
Yeah, we discussed this quite heavily at public service, or public ways, and thought we would suspend and get this project underway.
You're comfortable with everything that's proposed for this park?
We were at that time, in the fact that if the budget's not there to get every element in there, then we would put some of the other elements in next year. We wanted to get the field in and up and running, so we have fields to run again. But we...
Okay. So you would like to action tonight?
We'll suspend.
Okay, we'll try that. Then item number?
25-105.
Any comments from council? Any? And then item seven?
Six.
This ordinance references the 2025 OPWC resurfing project that is in the Wintergreen Development. The streets included with that is all of Royal Woods, Woodcrest, and Oakcrest between Woodcrest and Royal Woods. We got a grant from OPWC for $569,000. Our contribution to that project is $256,000, up to $256,000, and those monies are within this year's SIP program.
And questions, comments from council? Mr. Rosberg, what would you like to do?
We'll go two readings on this.
Move that to second.
Put it to second.
25-106.
And then item seven?
I'll take that one as well. This is for entering into a contract for construction of the Southwest Parking Lot Improvements. This ordinance covers the construction costs of the parking lot, any utilities or facilities, infrastructure that is associated with that, and the paving. And we're asking for a suspension of rules on that too, so we can get moving forward with construction on that project.
Comments or questions from council? Mr. Rosberg?
Again, heavily discussed at public ways. We want to get this going so that when we do the infrastructure project, we have places to gather and parking, so we will suspend and call.
That'll be 25-107.
Okay, and number eight, Mr. Bailey?
This also is part of the Southwest Parking Lot Project. It is not part of the construction. This is just for the pavilion structure itself. This is something that we heavily discussed in public ways as well. It's a 50 by 50 structure, and that we got the supplemental for the $300,000 for that. Everything else, the pad and the electric and everything running to it underneath, it is covered by the construction portion of the previous ordinance.
What's your anticipated construction cost?
I think for the parking lot construction, it was 550-ish, somewhere in there for that. I can get you a better number on that. I don't have it with me right now, but I can do that.
Thank you.
We're asking to suspend and call this type of legislation as well. There's a 16-week lead time for the structure, so the sooner that we can get it ordered, we can get it installed yet this year.
Again, heavily discussed, and we'd like to suspend and call this.
25-108.
And item number nine?
The next four pieces of legislation actually all relate to the same thing. This is a transfer of funds and supplemental appropriation of $350,000 for the design of the High Street and Reimer Road Roundabout Project. If you remember, NOACA awarded us a $2 million grant to construct that roundabout. That's just for construction costs. This is strictly for the design aspect of that project. It's the typical ordinances that we have to go through to make transfers of funds and to make those expenditures from the general fund to the capital.
I believe we discussed this, but that $350,000 isn't taking it away from anything?
It is not, no, it is not. It was actually budgeted for another project in the 205 Fund, where this project took precedence over it, just because we weren't expecting NOACA to come in as quick as they did and approve the grant money with that, so we wanted to basically strike while the iron is hot and get this moving forward.
What project is this money being removed from?
I will have to get back to you on that. I think it was from a sidewalk, sidewalks program, part of it.
Well, we certainly need sidewalks in this town.
Yeah.
What would you like to do, council member? Any questions or comments from?
We are under time constraint with NOACA, are we not?
Yes.
And that's why we wanted to make these moves to get that roundabout, so we don't lose out on the $2 million grant from NOACA. So I would say that all four of these are just moving parts to move funds from one to another, so I would suspend and call all four.
So we knew about the grant from NOACA several months ago, correct?
Correct.
Has it been like, I think about three or four months? It's just now getting to legislation?
I don't know offhand the timing of that grant. I'll find out.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We can get back to you.
I know it was discussed several months ago.
February, March, we got the grant.
All right. Any questions from council? Councilmember Rosberg, what would you like to do?
We'll suspend and call.
So that'll be 109, 110, 111, and 112.
Item number, what was?
Number 13.
No, no, no. 112, okay. Item number 13, economic development.
Yeah, I can speak to it. It's more of a planning issue, but he's not here. If you remember, we had passed a TMU district, a transactional mixed-use district. We created the terms for that, but we never, it's like creating an account but not putting any money into it. This puts the money into it. So what this does is it starts putting the pieces or the parcels that are going to apply to that TMU. This requires, because it's a zoning issue, a public hearing, so it asks that the matter be put on the first reading, but set for a public hearing. Mr. Kaiser, at that time, will come and give a discussion about the particular parcels that he intends on putting into that TMU.
Okay. Councilmember Yurcheck?
I'll just move that to second.
That'll be 25-113.
And then, again, the next one, I believe that's economic development. Item, well, item 14 would be misfixed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I sent out a lot of information to support this legislation. I don't know if you got through it all. Open to questions. Basically, this legislation formalizes the internal audit function. We will use a staff person from my office, part of their hours, to basically monitor the proper functioning of the internal control policies and procedures using testing. The internal controls basically safeguard the assets of the city. This is a recommendation of the Government Finance Officers Association for every city to have an internal audit function, and there will be a new committee, and that gives us the ability to report to that committee. And basically, our external auditors give no real opinions on the effectiveness of the internal controls. Their audit is more geared towards giving an opinion on the financial statements if they're fairly stated, so this takes it maybe a step further. And that's, like I said, a high-level overview. Are there questions? No questions?
Questions, comments? Our newest council member, Mr. Renese, would you take that one, please?
Sure.
Okay.
And I know in discussions, we were about two months behind where we should be because of some other items. I would recommend we suspend and call and get this moving.
I've been asking for this for 10 years.
Yeah.
So, makes sense to suspend and call.
Okay, that'll be ordinance 25-114.
Okay, and then, economic development, item number 15?
Sure. Typically, when we sell property, as from city-owned property, we just auction it off to the highest bidder, but sometimes when we have other uses for the property that could spur economic development, we go, appoint the CIC, the Community Improvement Corporation, as an agent, so try to reap the benefits of that economic growth. On Weber Drive over towards the airport, we have a parcel, a small parcel of property that we used to have a lift station on. We had since put a gravity system in, so the lift station was removed, so now it's just a parcel of land. That's adjacent to what used to be HNS Tool that has been later sold and now is being occupied by one of our newest manufacturers, Midwest Engineering. Midwest Engineering has some big plans as to going out back and expanding their facility even further, and in order to do that, they would like to have parking somewhere else other than the back. This parcel that's immediately adjacent that the city owns could be used for that parcel for additional parking. So, the CIC reviewed it. They said if we could get that parcel, sell it for $2,500, that'd be a good deal, for their opinion. And so I would ask, this legislation asks this council to appoint the CIC to act as its agent to sell the parcel to Midwest Automation for $2,500. This takes it off of our maintenance schedule. We don't have to go out and mow it anymore, puts it on our tax dollars, and then allows them to grow out the back, which will pay for itself tenfold over. So, that's what the ordinance, that ordinance does.
I'm sure we have questions on this one. Comments?
If you want to see it, I do have the map. I don't know if you're familiar with it. If anybody wants to see what I'm looking at, I can show you.
The one that's coming in.
The one that's going to buy the property?
That is the holding company for Midwest Engineering. Does it mean something or other for the property?
This property, is these people buying?
No, it's these people that are running it.
Council, is everybody familiar with the CIC, where this money will be going and how it'll be distributed? Okay. Mr. Yurcheck, what would you like to do?
I would think with our, we can go several readings on this.
Eco-readings, I think.
I'll just move that to second, in case we have some questions.
Very good. That brings us to our regular council agenda. We have ordinance 25-094. Mr. Yurcheck, that's yours.
I'll just move it to third.
Third. And item 25, or ordinance number 25-095, councilmember Stugmeyer?
Yeah, we had a recommendation for two readings, so I would suspend and call that this evening, unless something, has anything changed with?
Everybody familiar with the legislation? Okay.
So we'll call that tonight.
Suspend and call.
Mm-hmm.
And ordinance number 25-096, again?
Yeah, the EcoSmart Program. We'll go three readings on that. One more?
Move that to third. Resolution 25-03, councilmember Yurcheck?
I'll call that.
Again, any questions on any of this?
President, I would just make a comment that as I was, I mean, I tried to do the best I could in the last 24 hours, but I'm going to be abstaining from a number of these, only because, you know, I've got 24 hours to try and catch up, so...
We've had months of committee meetings and everything, and we certainly understand that, so...
But there are some here that I'm going to, especially if it was, if it's a bid or a proposal or request, I'm okay with that, at this point.
Very good. And again, welcome aboard. Appreciate you. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
We are adjourned. Will the regular meeting of Wiser City Council for Tuesday, July 15, 2025, please come to order? Will you please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the invitation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Renese?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Yurcheck?
Here.
And Williams?
Here. You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on July 1, 2025. May have a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes, no, one abstention. The minutes for the regular City Council meeting of July 1, 2025 are approved. Tonight, we have an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Would you like to address that, Mayor?
Sure. We have an opening on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Mr. Bill Durbin has been recommended and is willing to serve. Bill and his wife have been longtime residents in the city and have been volunteers for various causes. He's a recent, fairly recent retiree, and he's willing to give back. He has some background in the construction industry, and he managed a truck dealership, some, I think it was a truck dealership, yeah, some time ago. So anyways, just want to recommend him to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Any questions? Could I get a motion to approve Mr. Durbin, Sr., for the term ending December 31, 2027?
Mr. President, I move to approve Mr. Durbin, Sr., for the term ending December 31, 2027, for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill Durbin, Sr., has been approved to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the term that expires December 31, 2027. Next item, are there any visitors who would like to address City Council? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments brief, about two minutes.
Hi, I'm Becky.
If you would, oh, okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Just come to the podium.
Yeah, just come to the podium.
Just come stand in the podium. You didn't see me. I was standing.
Or would like you to come, just for the record.
Oh, you're telling me now.
No, I'm asking.
Better bring you down. Hi, I'm Becky Osteffler, and I'll do my best to keep it...
Your address, please.
What?
Your address for the record.
Oh, sure. 183 Alt, in the lovely city of Wadsworth, Ohio. Okay? Anything else?
No, that's good.
Okay. All right. So, I'll keep it short. Well, it didn't, well, okay, I will. But I will tell you that I did have a massive stroke, and that was five years ago, so sometimes my thoughts don't match with what I'm thinking, so when you watch or listen to me, you'll see my speech is a little bit off, or I might have to stop and think about what I want to say. So, there you go. All right. So, I have lived at the condominiums, Parkside Condominiums on Alt, for 23 years. So, I'm like the go-to person if you have any questions, all right? I can't work, so I can be the busybody that I am, along with my dog and cat. For years, and I'm talking, the majority of the time I've lived there, people like to drive fast on Alt, and they're mainly going to the park if they're coming down Alt, because there's not that many homes. And when they come down, they don't notice that it's where people live, and that has bothered me for years. I showed up here for another meeting back in August, and I'll just say three years ago, and I met Mr. Matt Hissick? Yes, okay.
Hiscok.
Hiscok, and I mentioned to him that they need, the city needs to put up a sign for slower cars, and he said, you know what, Becky, we're actually doing that now. So I said, great. So, the sign has been up for three years, and it's right at the corner of our street and college. And I will tell you that, and I'm not being exaggerated when I speak, I wouldn't be here otherwise. 80 percent... And I will tell you that, and I'm not being exaggerated when I speak, I wouldn't be here otherwise. Eighty percent of the cars that come on the Alt, regardless of the new splash pad, go above 35 to 45, in between there. And it has always been that way, even with the little sign that says 25 mile per hour. People who live in the homes go fast, people out of my condominium go fast. So I don't, you know, we live in an age where everybody is in a hurry, and everybody has to be priority, and they got to drive fast. And they may not realize that this is a residential street, number one. So that's been going on. Now, the new splash pad has increased traffic, and that's okay. That's cool. I'm glad for all the little kids. I'm going to miss the baseball field, but, you know, that's how life goes on. So now we have a lot of traffic on Alt, and I'm sure Grandview has the same. And I don't know about them having speedy cars, but I can speak for Alt. When people come down Alt, they, as I stated, go to the park mostly, or some residential, and they go fast. To me, 35 mile per hour is more ample to be on our street. The splash pad has increased to the point where I cannot go across the street where the sidewalk is. One side of the road has sidewalk, the park side, this park side where the splash pad is, does not. So I want to go and cross the street. I look both ways to make sure that there's no cars coming, so that I can see maybe one from the park, but I can't see beyond that. And then, of course, someone may be turning onto Alt from college. Do you know that they come so fast, I can't get across the street soon enough with my dog? And I know, God gave me this really small body, and I got short legs, and I get that. But my point is, there's just not enough time for people to cross the street. There's only the one sidewalk on the one side. I have seen mothers push their babies in the stroller on the side of the road, because they're not over on the sidewalk for some reason. And that's dangerous. And so I wanted to make note that there's only one sidewalk. The next thing I wanted to make note is, everybody's in a hurry. Everybody. And we're in a society where it's me, 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 and I get that, okay? I try not to be that way, and not everybody thinks about it like it. Now, I'm crossing the street one time, and here comes a car from the park, and another car was behind that car. And do you not know that they didn't slow down? When I'm in the middle of the street, they kept inching towards me in their car. And that was not a good feeling. And there's no cause for that. And that's aggressive behavior. Another time, a car was coming, and in front of the car were two family members on the motorized e-bikes. And they didn't stop when I was almost on the curb to get to the sidewalk. They just kept going. And sometimes when I cross from Parkside condo to cross the street, rather than ramp, to the sprinkler system for the kids, cars won't slow. They won't slow down. And that upsets me, too. I do look, I'm not stupid, I'm an old person, I know what to do. So I'm just saying, there's so much traffic, so much racing, hardly ever, anybody goes 25 mile per hour. And that's the honest-to-goodness truth.
Thank you, Ms. Hoxton.
Oh, I'm not done.
No, I mean, we've done way past.
Oh.
But, no, 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 I don't want you to go just yet.
It's very dangerous there, I just started.
No, we understand that. Can you stay after council and allow us to talk to you? Would you stick around so?
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm going to, yeah, I can sit back here.
Like, come talk to you in the audience.
Right? Okay, that's what I'm doing.
All right, and thank you for your comments.
Oh, yeah, there's more to come.
I'm going, can't wait. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to address council? Okay, seeing none, move to correspondence.
No correspondence.
Okay, that takes us to committees and commissions. We have Public Service Committee, Mr. Councilmember Stugmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Service Committee will next meet on Tuesday, August 12, 5:30 p.m., here in council chambers.
And Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next meeting in Public Safety will be on Wednesday, August 13, at 4:30 p.m., here in council chambers.
Public Ways, Councilmember Rosberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Ways will next meet Wednesday, August 11, at 6 o'clock, here in council chambers.
Economic Development and Planning, Councilmember Yurcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development and Planning will next meet on Monday, August 11, 5 p.m., in council chambers.
Thank you. Committee, the whole met tonight at 6 o'clock, and we went over legislation for this evening. Airport Commission, Councilmember Stugmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Airport Commission's next meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, July 16. That meeting will take place 4 p.m. here in council chambers.
Very good. Councilmember Copley, tell us about Stormwater Commission.
Stormwater Commission will next meet on Tuesday, October 14, at 5 o'clock p.m. here in council chambers.
Planning Commission will next meet July 28, 25, at 7 p.m. in council chambers. Cable TV Commission, who did I miss one? Cemetery Board, excuse me, Councilmember Yurcheck.
Cemetery Board will meet tomorrow evening at 5 p.m. in council chambers.
TV, Cable TV Commission, Councilmember Renee Cee.
Cable TV Commission, they meet Thursday, August 7, 4 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. And Council, or Councilmember Parrish, Senior Citizens Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Senior Citizens Commission has a plethora of things going on, but this Friday, at 11 to, 11 to 2, is the Air Car Show, which is very well attended. We also meet again in August 4, at 3:30 at the Spree Center.
Okay. That takes us to the reading of the legislation. Will the clerk please read the legislation for the next one?
Mr. President, we'll start with our first readings this evening. We have ordinance number 25-101 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and enter into a contract for the bulk water filtration project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-101.
Second.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-101.
Hearing no objection to Council, Councilmember Stugmeyer's proposal, call the question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-101?
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-101 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-102 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and enter into a contract for the lead service verification project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-102 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-102 has been moved to second reading.
Ordinance number 25-103 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and enter into a contract for the tree storm replacement project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-103 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-103 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-104 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance to amend Section 56.01 and to enact Section 56.02 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wadsworth to establish new rates for cable television and streaming services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-104 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Ordinance number 25-104 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-105 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service to enter into a purchase agreement for materials, installation, and construction services for the freed park improvement project through a source well cooperative purchasing agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-105.
Second.
Copley?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Standing.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-105.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Rosberg's proposal, call the question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-105?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and award contracts for the 2025 OPWC resurfacing project consisting of the construction of improvements of certain city streets and all appetites and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-106 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-106 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-107 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for, receive bids, and enter into a contract for the Southwest Parking Lot Improvements Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-107.
Second.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
And Yurcheck?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-107.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Rosberg's proposal, call the question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-107?
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
And Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-107 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-108 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service to enter into a purchase agreement for materials, installation, and construction services for the Southwest Parking Lot Pavilion Structure through an Omnia Partners Cooperation Purchasing Agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-108.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Standing.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
And Rosberg?
Yes.
We got six.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-108.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Rosberg's proposal, call the question. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-108?
Renee Cee?
Standing.
Parrish?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Standing.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-109.
Second.
Copley?
No.
Parrish?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Standing.
Hines?
Yes.
Yurcheck?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Rosberg?
Yes.
So, we cannot.
We cannot.
So, put that on second reading, please.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25, number 25-109 on second reading.
Second.
In a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Ordinance number 25-0, or 109 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-110 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance to authorize transfer of $350,000 for the State Route 94 and Reimer Road intersection improvements for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-110 on second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-111 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-111 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance to authorize transfer of $350,000 for the State Route 94 and Reimer Road intersection improvements for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-110 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Ordinance number 25-111 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways.
An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $350,000 in the 110 general fund for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-111 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Ordinance number 25-111 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-112 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Dan Rosberg and discussed at public ways. An ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation of $350,000 in the Ford 25 General Capital Improvement Fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-112 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Standing.
Ordinance number 25-112 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-113 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurcheck and discussed at economic development and planning, and forwarded by the Planning Commission. An ordinance to change the zoning district classification of 35 parcels listed on Exhibit A to this ordinance from the C-1 commercial district to the transitional mixed-use TMU district and declaring an emergency. And also, I can set a public hearing for this ordinance for August 19, 2025, at 6:30, if council does not object.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-113 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-113 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-114 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember Jim Renee Cee and discussed at Committee of the Whole. An ordinance to enact Section 33.80 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wadsworth to adopt an internal audit function and an audit committee in compliance with government auditing standards and declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number[1717.61]
25-114.
Second.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
And Renee Cee?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-114.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Renee Cee's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-114?
Hines?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
And Renee Cee?
Ordinance number 25-114 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-115 on first reading sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak and discussed at economic development and planning. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with the Wadsworth Community Improvement Corporation to act as agent for the city pursuant to Section 1724.10B of the Ohio Revise Code for the sale or lease of land owned by the City of Wadsworth, when authorized by city council authorizing the sale of approximately .06 acre parcel number 040-20C-17-055 owned by the City of Wadsworth to Hazuka Holdings LLC, setting the terms of the said sale and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-115 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-115 has been placed on second reading.
And our second reading is ordinance number 25-094 on second reading. There is a public hearing set for August 5th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers, sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak, and discussed at public, or economic development and planning. An ordinance to amend Sections 154.545 and 154.546 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wadsworth pertaining to public rental storage facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-094 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-094 has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number 25-095 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service to negotiate and enter into an agreement for smoke and dye testing services for the sanitary sewer overflow, SSO, remediation program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-095.
Second. Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I call the question on ordinance number 25-095.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Stugmeyer's proposal, called a question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-095?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Renee Cee?
Yes.
Hines?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-095 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-096 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at public service. An ordinance approving the participation in the Echo Smart Choice Program and providing for corresponding electric system rates and requirements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-096 to third reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-096 has been placed on third reading.
Our last one this evening is Resolution Number 25-03 on third reading, sponsored by Councilmember John Yurichak and discussed at committee of the whole. A resolution designating